On behalf of our President, Skip Hinman, I welcome you. Our partners today are the Merced Sunstar, Comcast, and the good folks at JD Sanders LLC. Today's forum will be posted on the Merced Sunstar website and broadcast this Thursday night on Comcast. It will also be placed on our association's website and our Facebook page. Before I introduce our guests, I'd like to tell you a little bit about who we are. Locally, we are the Merced County Association Realtors, over 500 members strong. In our association, we are Realtors, loan officers, appraisers, escrow officers, termite inspectors, home warranty companies, and home inspectors. We're also insurance salespeople in other related industries. We are Rotarians, Kowanians, we're Republicans, we're Democrats, we're planning commissioners, and we're city council members. We are a true broad cross-section of the community, or as we call it, we are the Realtor Party. We don't just sell houses, we do give back to our community. Every year, we hold two auctions and donate the proceeds to the Merced County Food Bank, the Salvation Army, the Rescue Mission, and the Boys and Girls Club in Merced. If you look to my right, you'll see a copy of a $25,000 check we gave to the Merced County Food Bank just about a month ago. We do believe in our community and we give back. First of all, to all you candidates, I'd like to thank you for being here and congratulate you all for agreeing to offer your services to serve our community. We appreciate it. We're going to start with opening remarks. And our opening remarks will have two minutes. When you hear the bell, the timer, please finish your sentence quickly so we can move on. Time is very precious this morning. So we're going to start with two-minute opening remarks. To my right, in alphabetical order, and I'll be with Mr. Barkman. Mr. Barkman, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I want to share with you quickly my background. I've served as member of Atwater's Measure H Committee for the last year. I've been endorsed by Atwater's Police Officers Association, Firefighters Association, and the Committee for Fiscal Responsibility and Accountability. I spent over 20 years in retail and satellite cable services and over 10 years in nonprofit faith-based organizations. My experience includes evaluating, opening, and closing business units and programs, providing leadership to 18 states and nearly 400 people as a regional executive, experience with legal, engineering, marketing, suppliers, real estate build-outs, customers, and national retailers caring our products. I've worked with annual budgets from $30 million to $237 million and developed national communications and training initiatives for customer base and clients and call centers. I've taught or led seminars in Japan, Great Britain, France, and Italy, and worked with multi-ethnic groups across the country. I currently act as a director within a nonprofit organization, evaluating and training sites in their effectiveness and how to redevelop to be more productive and increase their performance. And most recently, successfully worked within the community here with our churches and preschools building project, a two-year journey with the city to alleviate us from the conditions of California Environmental Quality Act that we felt were misapplied. So we're moving forward in that area, and thank you.
Mr. Raymond, the clock is on.
Thank you, guys. Basically, my life in this community has been dedicated to service. From a young boy, starting with different sporting programs, started the Atwater Youth Baseball, Atwater Little League, I've devoted time to this community. We started the very first challengers organization for baseball, which was a group for handicapped children. And there's no joy, like giving back, when you get a kid in a wheelchair and he hits a ball and you run him to first base, second base, third base. These kids who never had an opportunity to play have now done what they could never do, and it's just, it's amazing. So I wanted to continue my service. I went to the police academy and with the ultimate goal of coming back to Atwater. It didn't happen. I finished the police academy and I went to Livingston, where I served for just under five years before being injured in the light of duty and medically retired. But while there, I learned what law enforcement needs, what public safety needs to effectively do their job, and what it means to our community. You're going to hear a lot tonight about growth, and jobs, and the economy, but we can't get that until we have strong public safety, because businesses are not going to come here when they can't be protected. And that's what we have to focus on. And I can promise you tonight that I will be a hawk when it comes to public safety services and when it comes to helping improve our economy, which is going to grow our community. Thank you.
Clock is yours.
Good morning. Thank you very much for allowing me to come here today, speak for you. I've been married 29, over 29 years, 28 and a half-plus years I've been living here in the city of Atwater. We chose the city of Atwater because of the friendliness and everything else over the other cities around us. While being here, I've been involved in all kinds of community service. I helped start A-Pals back in 1997 with Chief Moore. I'm involved in CAC, which is Caring About Kids. I'm also a volunteer for the Atwater Police Patrol. Part of the Traffic Commission, which will soon end, but that's okay because we're forming a better supercommittee, or what they want, what they call supercommittee. It's a joint committee now between the Planning, Parks, and Traffic Commission, so things will flow better in the city. I'm in charge of the Neighborhood Watch Program since 2013, which is a very important program in the city to help the police department and form community involvement in order to keep the crooks out, chase the crooks out of the city. I'm also involved in Kowanus. I started my career in the fire department back in 1974 and started my public service and included that in 2009, 36 years. Halfway through that service, I chose to become a law enforcement officer. I went through post, police officer standards and training, came out under Penal Code 830.2. I'm a bona fide law enforcement officer, did that for 17 and a half years. I did that because I wanted to put the crooks in jail, not only that started fires, but also that did all kinds of bad things to people. My job was to enforce all state laws, including the same thing that the Atwater Police Department, the Merced Police Department, CHP, does. I chose to run back in 2012, but wasn't able to due to a family issue. But I'm back here to run again, and I chose to run and started running back in October of last year. The reason I did this was because of private agendas, poor planning, and financial irresponsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mayor Fall. The clock is on.
Thank you. I want to thank the Merced Realtors for allowing, having this program today. And I have been a resident of the city of Atwater for over 50 years, and 34 of those years I've served and was an instructor and teacher at Atwater High School, and so I've kind of grown with the city and been with the city. And the city, as we all know, is our city, not just one-person city, but our city. And we all must work together to continue the wonderful city that we have. And one of the things that we did as a city and as a community was pass Measure H. The community said, "We want to have public safety, we want to continue public safety, we want a safe city for the city of Atwater," and that's what you did. And we thank you very, very much. With the passage of Measure H, we have been able to increase our police department, we've been able to increase the cars, the, all of the equipment that it takes to run a police department. But the main thing is, we have an up-and-coming police department, and we'll be able to maintain that police department. We also were able to purchase a fire truck. So now, we have a ladder truck that we can get to the top of the community center, or that we can get to your two-story or three-story home. So it's bringing protection to you, the citizens of Atwater. So I really would appreciate your support and for our continual development and growth of the city of Atwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Price, the clock is on.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for having this forum. My name is Jim Price. I came to this community in 1980 by way of the United States Air Force, just like a whole lot of other people did. I retired in 1990, and I became a dispatcher at Rigs Ambulance, and I was then thrust into the field, riding along. This kind of gave me a background, exactly knowing what our EMS system, what our public safety system involved with. From there, I became a business owner, been a business owner since 1994. With the closure of Castle, I had a recycle center that was operating under the Air Force, and I just took it over as a civilian venture. By the way, don't ever get into the recycling business, it's a nasty business. In any case, from there, I became real interested in the politics of the local area, and where it started was with the Joint Powers Authority that was misguided the closure of Castle. And as you can see today, 19 years to this month, Castle is not a whole lot better off today than it was when we lowered that flag for the last time. From there, I got real interested when I saw the utility tax that ultimately became illegal for the city of Atwater. And it kind of gave me a view of how things were working in the city of Atwater. Just to kind of back up a little bit, give you a little bit more of my background. I'm married, five grandkids, two daughters, and one brand-new great-grandbaby that I'm very, very proud of. In any case, my background in the military as a supervisor of 60 people for refueling aircraft, B-52s and KC-135s, kind of gives me an idea of how to manage people. I'm also one of those, well, we'll get into more of it. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, ladies and Mayor Fall and gentlemen. If I can, okay, now we're going to get into our first question, and we're rotating, so the first question will go to Mr. Raymond. "In an effort to get locals working again, generate general fund income, and produce property taxes, the city reduced building fees in 2013. The results have been undeniable. In 2012, five homes were built in Atwater; in 2013, four were built. This year, over 26 new home building permits have been issued so far. When the current fee reduction program expires at the end of this year, will you vote to continue it or let it expire?" And you have up to one minute. Start with Mr. Raymond.
That's very simple. Emphatically, no, I would not let it expire. I would vote to extend the cuts, if not vote to eliminate them altogether.
We need to work on it towards the commercial end as well, because homes aren't going to be the only things that bring in people. We need to bring in businesses to support those people, so we need to expand it out to the commercial end as well. So I'd vote for that, to expand it and to extend it for the homes.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Fall?
Yes, I think it's been a very successful thing, and we need to continue to have it. It's, the thing is this, this is impact fees versus building fees, and so the impact fees are the things that we have reduced. And we will, if you, and you can save about $6,000 if you go through the whole process and, per house. And so I think we've really made a start, and especially the increase in the number of building permits that have been issued since we started this. So I would feel that we need to continue it, because we have a lot of places and a lot of finished lots that need to have homes on them. And right now, we have three different developments going on in the city of Atwater, and we need to expand that.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Price?
Like everyone, I follow along with it. I truly believe that this is a program that needs to be continued. We have a lot of empty lots, as was said, and as what Mr. Vineyard said, I too believe that the commercial end of this needs to be included within this. It's important to know that, you know, if you're a developer, if you are a commercial venture, that you can come to a city where you're going to be welcomed, where there's going to be a sense of wanting to put together a business that's going to be welcomed and is going to have the full support of the local government in your development and in your future and growth.
Thank you. Down, Mr. Barkman.
I agree with everything that's been said here. There's two components of it that I think are important. One is, we need to evaluate if those fees and permits are even in our law and should be continued at all. The other thing is, is when it comes to permits and fees, I come from a sales background, and I learned a long time ago, you don't throw everything on the table right away. To relieve fees and permits is a great closing tool, but you don't go into the beginning of a sale of the community and the values of the community and the values of a property with your low-ball offer. You wait till the end, you find out the needs, develop to the needs, sell to the needs, and then you use your closing tools to seal the deal.
Thanks, sir. Okay, we're going to move on to the next question. The next question will be, Mr. Vineyard will start. "Just two years ago, Atwater flirted with bankruptcy. Since then, the city has made some tough decisions, and the voters have passed a public safety tax. Positions and pay are being restored at the Atwater Police Department. However, the Atwater Police Department is still down eight sworn positions from a high of 36. Do you have a plan to restore those positions, and if so, what is your plan?" If you can do it in a minute.
Well, actually, we're down more than that. We originally had 40, according to information I got, so we're down a few more than that. Measure H is a stop-gap measure, obviously. We've got to bring in more businesses. We have to bring in either, you know, some hotels for the TOT, that would be a great thing to do, because we have things to offer. We have to go out, we have to promote the city and bring in businesses. We can't just rely on the citizens' backs. We have to bring in businesses in order to sell homes. People, there's only going to be so long that people can, to buy homes, and then they're going to start looking for places to work, and pretty soon, people are going to stop buying homes. So we have to promote the city in order to do that. I'm not a micromanager. It's the city manager's job and the police chief's job to hire officers, and that takes time, but I'm going to be supporting them fully. My job, I would think, would be go out, go out to conventions, or try to help go out, people to go out to conventions, promote the city, bring in businesses, personally go out and talk to businesses in other areas and promote the city, show them what we have to offer, and bring them in here.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Fall?
Yes, well, I think we're going to have to maintain and continue to use the revenue from Measure H, and I think that the city's citizens are going to have to, because, and we're going to have to do it slowly. It won't have, happen overnight, the replacement of our, of our police officers, but if we make that our priority, I think that it will, we'll get there. I agree that we need to promote the city and to increase, bring in businesses. One of the things that we're doing in the present time is we're dismantling the wastewater treatment plant, so we can increase that into our commercial area to attract businesses. But in order to attract businesses, you have to have jobs, and that's one of the things that we have to work with, with Castle Development Center, is to work on trying to replace the AT&amp;T call center and to try to bring out additional businesses out there, so that that will create jobs, so that will also attract businesses to come to our city.
Okay, just to follow up to that, Mayor, so you are committed to working to restore the positions?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Price?
Absolutely. The police department is the key to the city and its security for people, for business, for everybody. Without a solid police department, we're never, never going to prosper and grow. Businesses need to be encouraged to come here by way of strengths, of what is the positives and what are the things that we have to offer within the city. As a business owner myself out of Castle, I know how this works. If I don't have airplanes coming in, we don't have revenue coming in. It's the same thing in the city. We have to have commercial ventures coming here. Our biggest detriment right now is the fact that, folks, we're living in California, and the atmosphere in California in the way of overregulation and fees and taxes are just a huge detriment. So we've got to learn to get around this. How we're going to get around this is anybody's guess. It is a very dynamic situation in this state, and we need to do something within the city to do something about it.
So you are as well committed?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barkman?
I also am resolved to stay the course on this and do whatever I can to help the chief bring in more police officers. I also acknowledge that we live in a climate that is, makes it less easy, more difficult to find qualified people to come into the city. My older son is in law enforcement and an investigator in another state, and around the county, the city, finding those people is extremely difficult. So I would recommend that you also encourage people you know to apply to the city of Atwater. It's a great team of people.
All right, thank you. Mr. Raymond?
Look, lots of people are banking on Measure H. In eight or nine more years, Measure H may not be here, and Measure H is keeping a status quo. So what we have to do is build our tax base now, so that we can afford to replenish the cops that are lost and then grow from there. But the biggest hindrance I see to that right now is this supercommittee that's meeting one time a month. I see that as a big deterrent to big business. So what we have to do is make sure that businesses know and understand that job creators will have priority, and that the city of Atwater will host a special meeting, a general supercommittee meeting, and a council meeting, so we can get these businesses through if they are job creators. That way, they still have a reason to want to come to the city.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're, I think everybody got that question. Mayor Fall, we're going to move to you. "Everybody screams, 'We need jobs.' AT&amp;T just closed, other businesses are closing, and there are several vacancies in the Save Mart Shopping Center. There are vacancies in our beautiful downtown. Do you think City Hall is doing enough to create a business-friendly environment? And if re-elected, what will you do to foster an even better environment for job creators?" And please be specific as you can.
Probably attracting business is a very difficult thing to do, because you have to have the people there to support your businesses. So I, I think that's the number-one thing, is that we have to be able to provide the people to, that have jobs, so that they can participate in the businesses. But what I would do is, I, as we have and we're currently doing, is encouraging people to come to our, our community and to start businesses. And it is a very difficult time to be a small businessperson with all of the requirements and all of the restrictions that these people have to stay in business. And our downtown area, we do have some vacancies, but we have, the majority of our downtown area is full of businesses that are growing. And we thank the Passadore's. We thank the people who are down there and continuing to make it grow. And so I just think we need to continue to encourage these people, to welcome them, to make sure that they see that it's a friendly place, and then they come to the city of Atwater, we, they have a place, and they know the ways to go to get through the process.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Price?
You know, one of the things that I pride myself on is marketing and promotion. One of the things that I've noticed with the city of Atwater is, number one, go to the website. That is a dismal failure. Our website here doesn't show one church, one school, one store, the Bloss House, nothing. If we're so proud of this city, then let's, let's show it off in the website. It says Atwater on there, but you don't know what state it's in. It could be on Mars, for all we know. Second of all, a four-day work week. The normal business world works on a five-day work week. We're at a four-day work week. We have got to do something about taking a schedule and breaking it down and figuring out how we can do five days a week. Also, I just recently went in and paid my water bill and asked the folks that were taking the money in there if they had a marketing and promotion package, if somebody came in and said, "I'm bringing a business," or "I'm bringing my family here." Do you have, what do you have to go and show off to city? Nothing. There is nothing to go and promote locally. If we ask, if somebody comes to the window and asks, there's nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Barkman?
Two things I'd like to say about that. First of all, success, as you know, as businessmen and women, is that your success is based on your attitude. The old saying, "Your attitude equals your, your altitude equals your attitude." You know also that enthusiasm sells. We have to have a different attitude and way of working together on city council, that's what I'm committed to, having a different and more positive attitude about the opportunities for the city. And also, we can't wait for Ferrari Ranch to build out with its 2,900 potential jobs and potentially $2 million in revenues to the city. We have to have opportunities coming through the pipeline that we are working as city council with the county economic development office, maybe other cities, to get ideas. We can't overlay somebody else's success on our problems. We're not the same. But we need to work conscientiously to get those jobs, those employers in the pipeline and keep at it.
Thank you. Mr. Raymond?
I believe City Hall's doing the best they can with the resources they have afforded to them. I believe Chief Petro has done a fantastic job, being thrown into the inferno, what, about two years ago. You know, at the brink of bankruptcy, you know, they, you know, "Here, take this mess," and, and he's done a fantastic job turning things around to this point. But what we need to do to fill these vacancies and bring these jobs, which has been echoed tonight, and I'm glad people are listening, but we have to go out and we have to champion our city. We have to talk about the beauties of Atwater and why we want people to come here. We have to be willing to go out on our own dime and say, "Hey, look, come here, come see what we have to offer." And we need to do that by eliminating the impact fees. You're trying to squeeze blood from a turnip when, when these businesses that come in, they typically will pay to make the, the changes needed to the infrastructure, so that they can come here and they can succeed as well as the city. And so I believe that working with City Hall and bringing in these businesses, they can go back to a five-day work week. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vineyard?
Plain and simple. We have to have more money in the budget in order to hire more people. Now, it's also professionalism. It starts from the top down, city council down. Now, the people I've worked with there in City Hall have been, been very professional. Sure, we all slip up once in a while, we all have bad days, and that has to be corrected once in a while. That's the city manager's job. But one way to help would be possibly to bring interns in each specific area, and that's up to the city manager as well. But it's all budget-driven. We've got to bring in businesses, we have to bring in more dollars to the general fund, so our profit margin beats our expenses. It's plain and simple. So we just have to help out with the people where we can, be as friendly as we can all the way around.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask one more question, and then I'm going to ask past-President Ernie Ochoa to take some questions from the membership in the audience. The question for you, starting with you, Mr. Price, is, if you're elected, if you're elected at the end of your first term, what two accomplishments would you want to be most proud of? What do you want them to say about your first term at the end of four years?
At the end of the first four years, I'd like to make it clear to the people that businesses are going to have a friendly place to come to. Likewise, for homes, if people want to relocate a family here, we want to make sure that we have a friendly place, a good place, a business-friendly and family-friendly area to come to. Secondly, I'd like to also make sure that we have a safe environment here. I want to see our public safety be second to none. Our police department to be well-compensated, well-equipped, our fire services to be the best and not, second to none. That would be the two most important things that I would love to see happen at the end of a first term.
Thank you. Mr. Barkman?
I'm sure I'll agree with most of everything that's said here, but two things that come to mind as I'm sitting here and listening to this is, number one, an effective city council. I've said on, or gone and visited city council meetings over the last year to two years, and there's so much talk that's unnecessary, and it's ineffective, and it leads to inefficiency. We need to work together, treat each other right, and get the job done. That's what we were elected for. The other thing is to get out and get potential job opportunities and businesses in the pipeline. Do it consistently, year in, year out. Hopefully, bring four new businesses over the next four years into Atwater in technology, assembly, or manufacturing to offset retail, and bring more prosperity and high-paying jobs.
Thank you. Mr. Raymond?
If elected at the end of four years, what I would like to be able to tout as an accomplishment would be a safer community for our families, so that we can all live together. I mean, it's been joked about that, you know, no one lives in Mayberry. We deserve Mayberry, and I would like to be able to have the law- Mayberry. And I would like to be able to have the law enforcement and public safety status, that, that we can have that and have that kind of community. But also, and more importantly, I want to be able to say that we were able to unleash the power of the individual, that we were able to restrain government and promote liberty amongst the people.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Mr. Vineyard.
In four years, I want to have a budget that we have a surplus again, not one that we have to constantly dig into and worry about whether we're gonna have another fiscal crisis. I want to have a safety system that we're not constantly worried about whether we have enough officers to put on the street if we have two or three go down, whether we're gonna dig into the reserves or not, and worry about if we have to keep hiring. I want to be remembered, the fact that we have a cohesive city council. We're not constantly bickering and fighting, and we're not looked at a joke throughout the county, that we, that we can work towards progress and planning ahead, not constantly pointing fingers at the reverse or the past history, that we've learned something and that we can move forward instead of just turning our wheels in the mud.
Thank you, Mr. Vineyard. Mayor Fall.
I would like to see at the end of our, my four years is that we have a, the beautiful community that we have now, and that we have our public safety and our utilities, infrastructure up to where they're supposed to be so that our enterprise funds are balanced, so that we have enough revenue to support our, the expenses for our water, sewer, and garbage, that we have the public safety continues to be outstanding as it is now, supported by the teamwork of the citizens and with, through Measure H and then financial solvency. That is a key for us. We really need to continue the program that our city manager has started and the council has started, and we need to continue the checks and balances to make sure that we monitor how we move money from one fund to the other. So we know exactly where the funds are. We need to continue that. Parks and Recreation, we have some of the most outstanding programs. We want to continue those.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Ochoa, former president, question.
Thank you, Andy. Good morning, everybody. A few months ago, the Merced Sunstar reported that Atwater's Finest was under review. Is there an issue there that the citizens of Atwater need to be aware of? And in your opinion, are we out of the woods from that yet?
Are you, you referring to a specific article?
The State Controller's Office was reviewing Atwater PD.
So, pardon me. Our mayor's requested that she answer it first. Mayor?
The State Controller sent a, a team of auditors down to our community and with our Mr. Zanoni in charge of the finances, they went through all of the different areas and funds and everything that we have. And they didn't, according to the young man who were doing the, the review, they felt that every, they appreciated what we offered to them, and they, they didn't see anything of major consequence. But we do not know until the, they're coming down next week to meet with the city manager, the finance director, to see exactly what the results of the audit were.
Do you think, Mayor, we're out of the woods?
Well, we, I think that the audit will find that we're, you know, we have done everything that we're supposed to be doing. They will always find things that we need to improve on, but I think that the, the, going through the bankruptcies, the first step that we did and getting, going into the contracts and all, I think with the city manager and his plan with our finance director, they've done an outstanding job.
Fair enough. Thank you. And Mr. Price, would you like to respond?
The review that was done by the State Controller is indicative of things that are improprieties that have gone on for some years. Some of them were rather hair-raising, to be honest with you, but it, it opens up to the, the overall thing. The city's finances, despite all the talk about how great things are over the last two years and the last two budgets, are not as great. And here is a report here, Price Page made a, a report. And the general sanitation funds have not have net equity deficiencies and water fund is net working capital deficiencies. These conditions raise substantial doubt about the city's ability to continue as a going concern. That means we're in trouble, folks, and this came out in February of this year. So we need to go and take a hard look at our finances and how we can trim, how we can improve, and where we're gonna go. Measure H is only a stopgap until 10 years and its sun sets. We're dependent upon that. We've got to get off of that and get ourselves back on track.
Okay. Gentlemen, would you like to respond? Mr. Barkman?
What you need to know is that on July 14th, city council meeting, Bill Zanoni, who's been critical in the recovery of the city, gave a report to city council and those present that the city did in fact have a negative $8 million cash deficit from sewer, water, and general funds that were moved around and used and not tracked. What he also said, corrections were in place so that could not happen again, and that it could be tracked. He also said that we are making headway on paying back those funds and that we are currently operating in a balanced budget. So while the situation is not comfortable in any way, shape, or form, it is on a good track. It is recovering, and we just need, as whoever's on the new city council, that we don't mess it up and we make wise decisions.
Good advice. Mr. Raymond.
Yeah, you know, to speak to that, we're not out of the woods yet. Right now, we've had a balanced budget this year, thanks to the city manager and his time, and actually driving to Siri, or wherever the attorney is to meet with him, to go over, get the budget and everything squared away. But next year, we're back in the red, and that's a problem. We cannot operate from the negative and try to succeed. We've seen it on the federal level. You keep spending and spending and spending to try to get out of it. It doesn't work. So we have to focus on how we can bring in our, our, rein, rein in our monies. And as Mr. Barkman said, you know, we have $8 million that's gone. It's been, you know, shifted and shell-gamed, and we can't allow that anymore. So we have to figure out how to correct the problems and move forward from there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vineyard.
Good things. They're checking balances on, on what, how the system works and whether it's working correctly. And that's, as I see it, that's really kind of really what it was. Someone felt that something wasn't quite, quite right, and they, they came in to check it. My feeling is that decisions were made to get the city back on an even keel, and those were correct decisions because we are back on the correct path. Economy fluctuates, so things are gonna go up and down. They go up and down in your own household. You kind of do your own audit in your own household, or you should. I think we need just to wait to see what that audit turns up before we make any type of hysterical shout and cry for what's going on. So let's make a decision after the audit comes out and see what, see what the true facts are.
Thank you, Mr. Vineyard. And Ernie, if you want to find another person to ask a question, and just to request that our members, remember, we request that the question is shorter than the answer. So. We got one over here.
Thank you, Cory.
We've heard about the Ferrari Ranch development. My specific question is, where's the water going to come from to sustain that development when we know that Meadow Brook is contaminated and that the green sands has pulled sand out of their well, and those are the north and the south? So where specifically are we gonna get water to maintain that area?
Okay, and we'll go back in order to Mr. Barkman. Do we have adequate water supply to develop the Ferrari Ranch, I would think the question is?
Well, first of all, we need to pray for rain because this next winter may be as difficult as the last two or three. My understanding of Meadow Brook and Atwater Water is, is essentially this. Atwater has gone before the PUC to talk with them about the conflict regarding Meadow Brook water. The goal, as I understand it, is to keep the water service as well as sewer within Atwater city limits. And at the city council meeting last night, there was approval, which will be paid for by the development group for Ferrari Ranch, to do a water assessment so that we have more information. But as far as I'm concerned, if I'm, if I'm elected to office, I'm going to be an advocate to keep all of that in Atwater.
Mr. Raymond, Ferrari Ranch, we have adequate water.
Yeah, I met with the developer last week, Ferrari Ranch, and in talking with him, he, he said they, they weren't sure where they were gonna get their water from, whether it be from Atwater, from Meadow Brook. And I, I, to be honest, I think that's irrelevant at this point. We, we just need to work with them to get the development in. That way, we can work on expanding our tax base and going from there. Because wherever they get the water from, it's gonna be taken care of. They're gonna pay to have it treated and fixed because they're not gonna contaminate all the people around. Meadow Brook's going through a major lawsuit right now that I think they're, they're paying out X millions of dollars in the, the fees. But we have to work on getting the Ferrari Ranch in here. That way, we can help save our city.
Thank you. Mr. Vineyard.
Mr. Raymond's thing, we have to get that development in, but I also know that Meadow Brook is going through a possible sale to another company who stated they would put wells in, put more wells in, and drill wells in order to supply water there. So there, it's kind of a double-edged sword there. We, we just need to get the development in, let them determine whether it's gonna be Atwater City water and how they're gonna deal with that. One suggestion I might offer, once, once that's in, is possibly maybe put some type of storage tank facility in there so that if something happens to the water system, at least we have a backup storage. So we need to look planned down the road in that instance. But we gotta deal with the situation between Meadow Brook and Atwater City and who's gonna supply it. And then those, whoever is in charge of that's gonna have to determine how they get the water to us and how to fix their own situation.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Fall.
This is a very serious matter, and it's kind of an underhanded thing that happened in 2008 with the PUC agreeing to allow Meadow Brook to go into our sphere of influence and to take in our water, that we had already, that is our area, and that was our right to provide water in that area. So this is a very serious matter that has, is now in the court system, and the Ferrari Ranch and the city of Atwater have taken the Meadow Brook Corporation to court over the process that the PUC did for allowing Meadow Brook to expand its area of service. And so this is a very serious thing, and the city of Atwater is, is out fighting it because if, anyway, it was very interesting how it happened, and they did not follow any of the procedures that all of you people know in, in the environmental things, the public hearings, things like that. Those were not done.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Price?
You know, the water issues are always gonna be there, and the sad realities is, is that whoever provides that water out there, it's gonna be in short supply. How it's gonna come by either a private entity or another entity outside of the city is something that's gonna shake out through the courts, and it's gonna be a Ferrari decision. What my concern is, is that we make sure that whatever services that the city can offer, we offer them up, and we offer them up at a fair and decent pricing, and make sure that, that community of new businesses is going to be a great source of tax revenue for our city. It's something we desperately need. And if that comes by way of, of the court system, well, so be it. It's the way of the world these days. We all know that. But water is a big issue, whether it comes from a private entity from the city. It's, the bottom line is to make Ferrari a growing economic concern for the city.
Okay, it sounds like the councils and, or the, excuse me, the candidates are in tune with the Ferrari Ranch. And Ferrari Ranch, for your information, is where the new bypass is being constructed. Okay, question from the floor.
Yes, we have a question here from Phil May. He's a Realtor member of our association, and he's also the current president-elect of our association.
Good morning. Two-part question. The first part is concerning, well, they're both concerning campaign contributions. How much have you raised? And the second part is, who is your largest campaign contributor?
Okay, I think we start with Mr. Raymond. How much money have you raised? And what is your, who's your largest contrib, who's your largest contributor?
You know, I came to the game late, and in the, the month I've been campaigning, I've raised $3,500, mainly a lot of small 20, 30, $50 donations, with my largest being $1,000 from Genie Knight.
Thank you. Mr. Vineyard.
I'm trying to think here because we've gone over the books, and I, my treasurer and I haven't really looked at the total sum. I'm probably thinking it's around, I'm trying to think here because we did some fundraising, probably around $6,000 or $7,000 is my guess, because I try to stay out of the books in order to try to keep as much away from being accused of having my fingers in it, into the funds. Largest contributor would be Cal Fire.
Thank you. Mayor Fall.
Well, the largest contributor is Ms. Fall. And, yeah, so, and, so, anyway.
How much was that?
I think we're close to $3,000. So it's, and so we're, and I guess the amount I've raised is about $1,000. And so we're having some campaign, we're having a fundraiser coming up and all. So, but yes, it's, to run is a very expensive thing, and for especially, you know, little people, small communities, it's a very hard thing to do. So it's, and so that's, so I, I always commend people, and those signs that you see out, ladies and gentlemen, they're expensive signs. They cost money. So please appreciate every sign you see. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
When I hear the question of how much, I, I always come back with, "Not enough." So, but as for right now, it's probably in the area of about $2,500. It's not a whole lot. Largest contributor is my own company, and that was for $900.
Thank you. Mr. Barkman.
To date, I've had a number of small donations under $200 and such, but I'll be receiving money from Cal Fire and APOA, not Cal Fire, CFF, and APOA, which will probably be around $1,500 and $500. And those will be my largest contributors. Currently, I have about $90 in the bank account.
Thank you, candidates. And then probably take one more from the floor, and then we'll do closing remarks. Ernie, you got somebody?
Yes, we have one question from this side of the room, and we have Ms. Gail McCullough, who is a longtime Realtor member of our association.
Thank you, Ernie. Thank you, folks, for all showing up out here. One of the major questions I get asked all the time in my travels in showing property, what the heck is the problem with Castle? Why has it not progressed? And other basis reuse programs have been more successful. Could you just mention what your efforts would be and your thoughts on this matter?
Okay, so the question is, what the heck is going on at Castle, our next-door neighbor? As we know, it's just outside of city limits. What's your thoughts? We're, I think we're, Mr. Raymond? We, okay.
Well, Castle is a ton of beautiful, usable property if we just took the time to get it there, or the county did.
So why is it not, why, why is, I think the question is, why isn't it being developed? What can we do? What can you do as an elected official to help that process?
Well, you, we have to work with the county board of supervisors, and we have to try to go out and also champion Castle, say, "Hey, look, we have all this usable space." You know, we may not get the tax revenue from businesses coming in or developments coming in, but our citizens are gonna go to work there. Our citizens are gonna come back and shop in At, or they're, they're gonna come shop in Atwater, and we're gonna raise money through the tax base there. And with the closing of AT&T, you know, we need to be back up in the Silicon Valley, you know, where we have all the tech companies and say, "Hey, we have call centers. We have, we have much usable space. We're doing part of it with Google right now." And I know someone said recently that in four or five years, when Google's contract's up, they're gone. Why? We need to encourage Google to come back and expand, bring in other companies. And I think with, with the help of the city of Atwater, working with the board of supervisors, we can develop Castle, and we can make it a viable place to be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vineyard.
Castle is viable. It's in our back door. I've actually went out and challenged both the candidates. the candidates for Supervisor Three, and said that I expect, if I'm elected to City Council, they will work with me because I will be in their office as much as possible because they have to get back and work with us. It's on our area. It's going to benefit both of us if we promote that, if we promote Castle and bring businesses in, because people will live here in Atwater and work there. So we have to get out and promote it together. They're both kind of hem-hawed, but I reinforce the fact that I expect them to work with us and to come here and be part of it and be part of us. Because if it doesn't grow, Merced doesn't grow, Merced County doesn't grow, Atwater doesn't grow. So it's very important that we bring businesses together into Castle, and there's plenty of room for it, plenty of room for growing.
Great answer, great answer. Mayor Fall, what can we do to get Castle going? What can you do as mayor for another four years to get Castle going?
As Mr. Vineyard said, harass. And that's what we will continue to do with my dear friend, Mr. Hendrickson. I know he works as hard as he can hard work, but I call him about, okay, Mr. Hendrickson, what are we going to do with AT&amp;T call center? I got a suggestion about having Amazon come in and use this call center. I got a suggestion about, Ms. Fall, we're working, we're working. I said, we really need to work, Mr. Hendrickson. So we are really, to bring the people in, we're very, and I think we need to work with UC to have them expand out there beyond their graduate study area. I would love to have them come out and develop and put an additional college or something out there and use that. They have a beautiful graduate center, research center. I would love to see them expand their use at Atwater, out at the base. Also, the Christian Stone Ridge is out there. I'd like to see them expand. And we have something going on out there already. We need to continue it.
Thank you. Good answer. Harass, I like that, harass. Mr. Price?
Ladies and gentlemen, I've been out at Castle for 19 years. It's been my only place for doing business, and I don't have enough time in one minute to tell you all the things that are wrong with out there. Property is not usable, there's asbestos abatement issues. I'll just tell you this. This January, myself, Mark Hendrickson, and Scott Malta are all going to be jointly going to a trade show here in San Jose. There's a multitude of things that need to be done out there. However, the one thing that you look at any thriving city, the one thing that you will see that is the common thread is a thriving and prospering airport. One of the things that I want to see is that our website be redesigned and to include Castle and start calling it Castle Airport. It is not Castle Air Force Base. It is not a base any longer. We need to put that on there and show the working world, the corporate world, that we have a world-class runway, that we have an area that they can come and do business in.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Barkman?
Adding to what has already been said, I think as we get out and get business opportunities in our pipeline, sure, we have our own redevelopment district that we can call on, but we also have Castle. And as we go out, hopefully with the help of the businesses in the community, we need to use those opportunities to draw people and not just point them there, but point them to us as well. When you have more tools in your toolkit, you can get a better job done faster and invigorate both Castle as well as ourselves.
All right, thank you. Well, I think we've heard some great ideas from some good candidates, and I think Atwater's got a bright future with these folks at the helm. We're going to close with closing remarks, and we're going to start with Mr. Vineyard. And you'll, folks, will each have one minute to talk to the voters and our association and tell us why you should be elected. And the floor is yours, Mr. Vineyard.
Thank you. Again, thank you for having us here this morning. I want to get elected to City Council, not because I have any agendas, not because I have any special interests. Actually, I do. I have one. It's a 28,000 people of the city of Atwater, and that's who I want to work for. We have a city council that needs to work together. We have a city council that doesn't, that hasn't planned a lot, and I want to plan for the future. I don't want to work for the past. We have to do that, and we have to do that starting day one. We need to work on the budget, obviously. We need to bring in businesses. We need to bring in homes. We need to bring in commercial businesses. That's high-tech, low-tech jobs. We have a lot of areas of the city that need working on. I want to work on the downtown. I want to promote the downtown. I want to bring in businesses there. We need to work on public safety, both ends of it, both the police and the fire. We have fire equipment that needs updating, and we have to plan for that. We need to put in the budget. We need to put line items in order to fix the equipment and replace the equipment. That hasn't ever been done, and we need to do that. We can't depend on just Measure H and other things like that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Fall?
I just want to again thank the Board of Realtors for having this forum today. And I would ask for your support for another four years. This is our community. We want to keep it our community, but we have to work together as a team. And so I think, and that's what we've been doing. That's what our staff has been doing. That's what our public has been doing. And I think that every one of us know about the wonderful attributes of the city of Atwater. We want to continue our public safety, our financial solvency, our Parks and Recreation Department. That is a real important area that we need to make sure we keep, and response, and economic development and growth. We have a key area also in our city, and that is our educational program. Our city schools are outstanding, and we want to keep those, and our high schools. Those are the things that attract people to our wonderful community, and I do appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for this forum. My campaign for mayor is, can sum up in one word, it's about leadership. The leadership that is needed within the city here is going to be what is going to get us out of the financial doldrums and get this beautiful city of ours back on its feet. My business experience, my military experience, and supervision experience is what I feel is really my strong points for making this community come back again. We have a lot of roadblocks in our way. Next year's, as was mentioned, our budget, according to our financial consultant, is going to look very, very bleak. We have to come around on that. My opponent says that we're, you know, growing, not according to the expert. We need to make a real hardcore effort, and I intend to do that. I want to incite this community to have an ad hoc committee to talk about this with business leaders, and I want to also talk to our council and incite that conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Barkman?
Well, if I have the privilege of working with the city council, if you elect me, I think one of the things you'll get is a person who learned in kindergarten how to play well in the sandbox. And you'll get someone who understands the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that face an organization. You'll see a person who is not prone to make quick judgments or financially infeasible judgments, who knows how to stay a course and where things need to be changed, and someone who will work with you. I think one of the things that has lacked with some of city council members is an inability and unwillingness to talk with people and know what the thoughts of the community are.
Raymond, your closing statement?
Last Thursday, I leave my office. I work right across the street. I pull up right here on corner Constitution and Bellevue, and I watch a car pull over into the turn lane, getting ready to head southbound on Constitution. I watch a man reach over and punch the wife in the car multiple times. I immediately reach for my sidearm because it's what I'm trained to do. It's not there. I'm not a cop anymore. So I do the next best thing, which is be a good witness. I watch, I observe. The car takes off, I follow. I'm on the phone with 911. I'm telling them where we're going, where we're headed, what they're driving, the license plate number. Four minutes later, there's no cops there. That's not knocking the PD. That's a lack of resources, and that woman was not safe. I cannot and I will not allow that in my city. So when you go to vote on November 4th, a vote for Brian Raymond will be a vote for public safety. A vote for Brian Raymond will be a vote for jobs, and a vote for Brian Raymond will be a vote for fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, folks, on behalf of our 500 members and our association president, Skip Henman, we want to thank you for sharing your views. Our hope is that those of you who do get elected, that you continue to have a dialogue with our association, and you continue to protect private property rights, quality of life issues, and be a jobs advocate in our community. Thank you for attending, and how about a nice round of applause for some real good candidates? Just as a last reminder, this should hopefully be on the Sunstar's website sometime this afternoon, whenever Mr. Sanders can get the disc to them. So thank you again. Gentlemen, Ms. Fall, excellent job. One more.